Hello and welcome to Committee the Whole. Hold on one second. Okay, let's try that again. Hello and welcome to Committee the Whole for Monday, September 12th, 2022. I'm councillor Armand Hurford and as acting mayor this month, I'll be chairing this meeting. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. Could I have adoption of the agenda, please? Moved by councillor French, second by councillor Race. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're on to our one and only item this morning. Item 31, Permissive Tax Exemption Policy for Non-Market and Affordable Housing. And we've got Mr Gary Buxton here present to us. So over to you, Mr Buxton.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council. Let me just pull up the presentation here. Okay, so this morning, a brief presentation on the permissive tax exemption or PTE policy that we have with respect to affordable and non-market housing issues. So, oh, I've got animation that I didn't plan. The objective is to review and update a permissive tax exemption policy. And it's really around more clearly addressing issues around non-market and affordable housing. And it's only addressing issues. There are other parts of the PTE policy that aren't up for discussion as part of this review. The recommendation is that we repeal the existing policy from 2009 and replace it with the 2022 policy that's attached to your report to council. So PTEs has a little bit of background. They're exemptions for all municipal collected taxes as part of the community charter. They are restricted to charitable philanthropic or not-for-profit corporations. It's an annual program that we operate, although PTEs can be granted for longer time periods. Staff review the applications to ensure compliance with the legislation. And then council must adopt a bylaw on or before October 31st with respect to those PTEs. So hence the, there is a bit of time sensitivity around this. Say the legislation does allow PTEs for up to 10 years. The decision is entirely at council's discretion. So really, the review today is only related to how we want to deal with non-market housing issues within the PTE policy. So the, just a bit of background, the current affordable housing agencies that we have, there are four, actually, I'm suddenly realising that there are five. Cedar Sky Community Services, the Helping Hand Society, the House Sound Women's Centre and Squamish Senior Living and the Squamish Community Housing Society, which we've recently enacted. Not all operating housing agreements, as part of the the operating agreements between BC Housing and these nonprofits provide subsidies or financial assistance. The subsidies in some cases do not increase over time. In effect, it erodes over time. From the respect of the agencies, multi-year PTEs would provide some budgeting clarity and certainty, much in the same way that our five-year financial plan provides that for the district. And a two-year rent freeze recently implemented by BC Housing and recent increases in in operating costs and inflations have all had the sort of predictive impact of having larger budget deficits for these for these agencies. So property taxes do add to this burden over time in some cases. In some cases, the operating agreements and the do provide for that with some of these agencies. So it's a bit of a project-by-project review. So current situation, House Sound has the Pearls Place Transition House, Cedar Sky Community Services has the Four Projects, Spirit Creek is about to open, Helping Hands has Under One Roof and the Senior Living Society has the West Winds Project. So what we did is in getting to the recommendations to the amendments to the policy, we reviewed current non-market housing PTE provisions and looked at where we were at or where we could be at with with those current ones. We considered potential non-market housing that could arrive in the future. So we we considered the current situation with various scenarios and made financial projections of the potential impact of PTEs on various categories of housing. So the final part of this staff report provides a spreadsheet that estimates the financial impact. And there are various categories. If we, for provincially owned units, for all nonprofit units and then district-owned nonprofit operated units. If all of those added together, the total foregone tax revenue gets close to $700,000, which is significant. The numbers in the projections that we did are affected substantially by two individual projects. The West Winds Project, say it's newly constructed, not yet completely assessed. We assigned a value of $63.4 million based on the construction value. So that represents $230,000 or 34% of the estimate. So it's a significant chunk. And then a hypothetical project that we developed on lands in the Business Park with a projected assessment value of $75 million, just using the same unit value that we used for West Winds, providing some sort of comparison, which results in basically $275,000 worth of potential tax revenue or 40%. So those two represent a significant part of the projections that we came up with. So we have to keep that in mind. What we did then is to look at the estimated tax impact based on the impact that you can see there, the 135,000 plus or minus is based solely on if we granted PTEs based on the current policy recommendations. So it's significantly smaller. Allowing, so the estimated impact allowing PTEs for all categories of non-market housing has a significant impact on the district. As you can see, it was closer to $700,675. So that burden needs to be moved somewhere, shifted to other taxpayers. So what we're suggesting here is allowing PTEs for a more limited range of non-market and affordable housing. It makes that impact much more manageable for the district. So the recommendations we're making are contained in section four of the draft policy. A summary of the changes that result PTEs could be granted for up to 10 years, which is consistent with the legislation. We wouldn't provide PTEs to provincially or provincial agency-owned, given that we don't really need to be subsidizing the provincial government. Class three supportive housing would not be eligible essentially because it gets a very low assessed value. So the PTE has no significant impact. Nonprofit-owned and operated, non-market or affordable housing could be granted exemptions. And that there is a particular sort of carry forward here for the nonprofit housing organizations that previously had property exempted under 221 of the charter, be granted an exemption effectively to allow it to continue. That's with reference to the West Winds Project. What we're trying to do is carry forward the exemption that was statutorily granted to the Manor and the Cedar's. That, under the relevant section of the charter, was granted. It was, it had a zero assessment. So what we're trying to do is carry forward that through the new PT, allow that to be carried through under the new PTE policy. Otherwise, that project gets a significant tax burden imposed on it and they don't have that included in their budget. So there would be increases, impacts and increases on their rental rates. So the changes are proposed in section four. So we believe that the proposal to grant PTEs based on that results in a loss of about 134,000, which is not insignificant, but it is manageable with respect to the the district's overall financial plan. Alternatively, if you have some concerns, the recommendation would refer it back to council. And here we go back with the animation. So again, repealing the 2009 policy and approving the 2022 policy. That is the end of the presentation. I can entertain council's questions.
Thank you for that, Mr Buxton. Do you mind taking down the presentation? Yeah, thank you. I have councillor Race first.
Thank you. So when I was reading this, in my mind, I differentiate between supported housing and non-market housing. This type that we've been getting from developers, you know, non-market rentals, for example, that we extract out of development projects, whether they're managed by the developer or whether they're managed by our housing society. So I don't have an issue with the supported housing, the ones you mentioned. But you did mention our society. And so I'm wondering, and the first bullet point on the recommendation was the PTEs be recommended for, I think it was just non-market housing, it's quite general, for up to 10 years. So I have no problem with going through the, you know, doing a PTE for up to 10 years to give some security for these organizations. But I wonder if we want to differentiate between supported housing and things like like just a sub-market condo that came out of a development that's being managed by our housing authority. Because personally, I don't know that that's the kind of thing that I want to give a tax break to. And so I guess there's a question in there. One is, do we know how these units are assessed? And so when we take a condo out of a development and one of the conditions is in the housing agreement is they can't charge, I'll just pick a number, say more than 75% of market rent. Does BC Assessment look at that and say, okay, well, then it's only got 75% of the normal value of maybe the next door condo unit that's unrestricted? Or do they just still assess it at the full value of other units in the building? In which case, the occupant of that space would pay the full hit of taxes. But if it was assessed at a lower number to start with, because it is kind of a constrained unit, then the taxes would presumably reduce. And so I'm, kind of got around the circle there, but I'm just wondering if we want to differentiate between that scenario in some fashion versus the supported ones, you know, the Under One Roofs and the Seniors and Helping Hands and so forth. And somehow keep the two of them separate, treat them separately.
Sorry, through the chair, the answer is yes, we would treat them separately. Unfortunately, those units that remain owned by the developer and managed by either our society or any other nonprofit are not eligible and will not be eligible for PTEs because they are owned by a for-profit corporation. They would remain owned by the developer or the developer's designate or successor, which is a for-profit corporation. So they are not eligible for PTEs, period. The legislation just does not allow that. The answer to the second question is, I'm not sure that BC Assessment has got its head around assessing units under housing agreements. I don't know that they provide a lower assessment, in my opinion. They should to reflect the lower rental revenue that's available from them. But I don't know if they do. But they would not, there is no way we can make them eligible while they remain privately owned by a for-profit corporation. The legislation does not allow it.
Thank you. Well, that helps. But now we're starting on getting title to some of these units. We're going to get two of them out of that Finch Drive development. Presumably, the title would go in the name of our housing society. Would that need a PTE? Or would we just dictate that the rent is such and we don't tax it? Or we do somehow accommodate that in the rent that we're charging?
It would be, it would be. The property would have to pay taxes unless exempted by a PTE. The policy would allow that PT to be granted. If, in the instance, councillor Race, where the title moves to the society. That's different because it's a nonprofit owner. The PTE flows to the owner, not to the occupant. That's the issue with the with the privately owned units. The benefit of the PT flows to the owner. If it's a for-profit corporation, they are not eligible. But the society is a nonprofit, would be eligible.
Well, one last question on that point. If the developer sells it just to an individual investor, is that for-profit? That falls under the for-profit definition? It's not necessarily going to be a corporate owner of these non-market units?
Don't believe we can grant PTEs to individuals. Assuming to the legislation again.
Thank you. Councillor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, just a few clarifying questions. So with the West Winds Building, there's an estimated potential lost revenue of about $135,000. Did I get that right? No, sorry, 231. It's 231. I got it in front of me. I think I clarified that. But I just want to clarify that previously, we weren't, because the Manor was exempt under historical section of a charter, we weren't actually collecting tax revenue in our budgets to date for these units. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so although we can accommodate it in our forthcoming budget, we're also, we're not necessarily losing tax requisition based on our.
That's correct. There was essentially the, if council grants the PT, it was a zero assessment on the prior property and would be zero again on the current property under the PTE. So we're literally moving it down the street.
All right, that is helpful. Thank you. And then I had another clarifying question. Just in your tables, there was the municipal tax component that gets waived. And then there was other. Is that like utility fees or is that the other taxes that we collect on behalf of other agencies like the regional district?
It's the other taxes that are collected on behalf of other agencies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Penningill.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we need some policy around discrimination in terms of receiving a PTE. And so it's not a condition we have now, but if you think about sort of a religious organization providing some below-market housing, but maybe the nature of their religion is they don't support gay marriage and so on. And so they have, they would have these sorts of exclusions. I'm not sure that's the sort of thing where I'd want to give PTE exemptions for. Of course, you know, in terms of women fleeing violence, it does make sense that maybe you do exclude, maybe you don't want men living in that sort of housing. So there's maybe a bit of a dance there. But I'm wondering if there's some sort of language we could put in to to, because I think that the goal is, in my mind, to make sure that as we support organizations to provide housing options with PTEs, that it is as non-discriminatory as possible. So is there something we can do to achieve that?
There likely is, but I wouldn't recommend it. It's tricky legal territory to wade in. Keep in mind that this policy doesn't obligate council to provide a PTE. It allows or provides some guidelines for council to provide a PTE. That decision rests on an annual or biannual or however long cycle that council should choose. That decision rests entirely with council. So if you get to that situation where you have a nonprofit that an aspect of its operations make you uncomfortable, you're not obligated to provide the PTE. So I think that's best done on a case-by-case basis, rather than trying to capture that torturous legal minefield in a policy. I honestly would recommend that you deal with that as it arises.
Is there a middle ground then, maybe where, sort of in the preamble or objectives or something, we speak about a desire to achieve inclusiveness or something? So keep it fairly broad, but set that framing. Is that something we might want to consider?
You certainly could do. I say, the review here was really around housing affordability. So now we're wading into a slightly different area. But yes, if council wanted to, we certainly could do that, perhaps at a subsequent review. I suspect we will be back to review this policy once we've been through it once or twice and as we will be doing in the next month. So we could come back to it at that point.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, I'll take a, I've got one question here that has been unanswered so far. It was interesting to read that some of the funding models for these projects were, had some accommodation to pay some municipal taxes in the original funding models. And I was curious, with the PTE, the exemption, it's, the E is for exemption. So it's a kind of an all or nothing. Is there, is there some middle ground where we can match what funding is coming from the province to cover taxes so that we can still receive that portion? Or is it a simply an on-off switch from a taxation standpoint?
Well, it's not an on-off switch because, as I said, you retain the ability, notwithstanding the policy, to make a decision at council's discretion. Now, Ms Sousa here has been looking into the funding agreements and digging into them in the last few weeks, once the applications have come in. And there are some of those instances that we will want to deal with when those applications come back to you in a month or so. So again, as we get deeper into this, we are discovering wrinkles that I think we may wish to address in a future policy amendment that deal with the particulars of how funding flows and doesn't flow with respect to each particular project. So there's more news coming in that regard. And Ms Sousa will have that when the PTEs come back late September or early October.
Thank you for that. I found that part of the report quite interesting and how varied it was across the board with our existing providers and is undoubtedly going to get more complex as more, as more of these things happen.
It will, yeah. There is, there is more refinement coming based on what we've discovered in the last two weeks with respect to those operating agreements, or funding agreements, sorry, funding agreements.
Okay, and just, thank you. And just so I understand the timeline on that, is that something that will be addressed in this tax, like in this tax cycle? Or is this, this is where we are for now and we have to come back around next time?
I think we have some recommendation, policy notwithstanding, we have some recommendations coming to you in late September that will get us through this tax cycle. And then we may want to refine the policy based on those decisions for the subsequent tax cycle.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions while we're, yes, go ahead, councillor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, I was also just wondering if we've done any research of neighboring communities in terms of how they've addressed this? Or do we know if there's any leading examples?
Yes, we have. And frankly, most communities don't do this. We are unusual, not unique, but unusual. I mean, there are instances of PTEs being granted, but a more sort of general or policy-based approach. No, most don't across the board, deal with PTEs for affordable housing. I think in some cases with the larger communities, there are so many that it would have a, quite a significant impact on their budget. But no, we are a little unusual in taking this approach.
Go ahead, Mayor Elliott.
Mr Buxton, do you think, and I know we'll get more, or next council will get more information, or we'll get it in October before the end of the term? Okay. It makes me think that there is a need for a long-term strategy based on what we hope to build in terms of affordable housing. So as our affordable housing strategy builds out, PTE one can't sort of sit there unaddressed. Because if the next councils are doing their job and the society is doing its job, we could really be transferring quite a significant burden. And those projects would be getting off the ground, thinking they don't have to pay tax. And at some point, council may say, we cannot continue to be this generous, given how many units are now in the district. So is there, is there room, do you think, in the future for discussing a long-term PTE strategy?
Absolutely. I think this is a, this is a sort of a three to five year based on what we, what we know could potentially appear. And we think it makes the impact manageable. In the longer term, if a significant number of non-market or affordable housing units were to show up, yes, the situation and the strategy would shift. It would need to because the impact, as you can see, if you just paint the brush broadly, it gets to be significant quite quickly. So we've tried to sort of thread the needle, find some middle ground here that I think is a three to five-year policy. And beyond that, it would likely need to be reviewed based on where we're at at that point in time.
Okay, and then it would give nonprofits time to adjust.
Correct.
We wouldn't want to go one year to the next. And certainly, some of them would have quite a large tax bill to pay. So just makes me mindful of making sure this conversation continues in line with the society and our nonprofit housing providers so that we're not surprising them over time. Thank you.
Yes, councillor Stoner.
Thank you. Just on that note, I wonder if we actually consider, in the policy, it speaks to being able to provide a property tax exemption for up to 10 years. But I wonder if we flip that around a little bit and talk about providing a permissive tax exemption for no more than 10 years. And so that means new projects that come on board know that they have a bit of a runway, whether it's, we decide it's five or 10 years. But they'll have 100% tax exemption for up to or not more than five or 10 years. And then they can kind of wean themselves off of that and come up with a strategy to start to pay into tax over time. Just a thought.
Through the chair, the statute, the charter only allows for a maximum of 10 years. So we could not grant anything longer. So it is up to 10 years. Again, entirely at council's discretion. If you want to do two years, three years, five years, seven years, it's entirely at your discretion, but it can be no more than 10. I'm sorry?
But you could renew. So you could have a 10-year permissive tax exemption that gets, like, we have organizations that have had permissive tax exemptions for longer than 10 years on an annual basis.
Correct. But each renewal could be for no more than 10 years each time you do it. So 10 years from now, you could do it again if council wished.
Correct. So there's some nuance there. I just think maybe if we make the policy clear that it is kind of just a runway, I guess we can't fetter future councils from making that decision.
Okay, councillor Race, I appreciate the thought process, but councillor Race.
Thank you. An interesting point raised by the mayor because, you know, the report and the recommendation is that there not be a tax exemption granted to a provincial organization. In effect, the province can pay its taxes. And otherwise, it would be a download. But a lot of these not-for-profits are significantly funded by the province. And while they're not provincial entities, their funding is provincial, significantly provincial. And would we ever want to distinguish? Because really, what we're saying is the province gets a bit of a break in the funding budget that they need to operate that thing, that entity, whatever it is. And that, in effect, is a download. I think that's, I'm not suggesting that today, but I think when we're looking longer term and if these start to proliferate in that fashion, that might be a good thing. But the difficult thing, as you point out, is that at some point, you start to lose a lot of tax revenue like other municipalities and you just can't afford to do it. So we might, in a longer-term strategy, possibly take that into account so that everybody has a heads up and a budget timeline that they can start to work towards. Timeline that they can start to work towards. The other thing that occurs to me is we don't have to give one hundred percent exemptions, I don't think. It might be appropriate in some cases to start separating and. And just to pick a number, maybe only giving a fifty percent exemption as opposed to an entire exemption. I think I'm correct in saying that, but you can confirm it. So as part of a longer-term strategy, there might be. You know, if we say, okay, only ten years, and then you're going to pay half for the next ten years, that might be more the strategy. To to ease some of these things into a taxpaying role.
Through the chair, I I believe in answer to your last question, yes, that partial reduction can be done. And to be honest, some of those issues around government funding, you are going to be looking at when the P T Es come back to you in a month or within the month. So some of those questions are coming back to you rather quickly. Around the detailed funding models that Miss Sousa has discovered in the last two, two, three weeks.
Counsel, any further questions before? Move on. We've got a staff recommendation before us. Counsel Ray moves. Counsel French seconds. Comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for staff for bringing this forward. It. I think from the discussion, there are. Some nuances certainly to to kind of work our way through in the future. Fundamentally or philosophically, I don't have a problem with. The recommendation. I appreciate that this transfers some of the tax burden. Or tax burden to the other taxpaying individuals and entities in the community. Even at the largest number, personally, I'm not troubled by that. I think we have a strong tax base. For me, it represents in effect. Almost a forced charitable donation to the less fortunate in our community. And so I don't have difficulty. Transferring the monies or the amounts that have been set out in the report. To the wider tax base. I think that's just something as a community, helping each other. We can afford to do.
Counsel French next.
Thanks, Chair. So this staff recommendation in front of us now, which I support, I think is fairly straightforward and and. Is easy support for me. The next conversations we have, I think, are some more difficult decisions will have to be made. But this particular recommendation, I support without any hesitation.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson, then Counsel Stoner.
I'm in agreement with comments delivered by my colleagues. For myself, I think also the suite of recommendations delivers a manageable, to quote Counsel Ray. And also balanced, balanced, manageable and balanced outcomes with respect to tax hits and tax revenues for the time being. The three to five-year term we've been discussing. Another aspect that occurs to me in thinking about what is part of a long-term strategy is advocacy. Advocacy is an element in our housing society's terms of reference, and I think that advocacy is going to be a joint effort with between our future councils and that society. And in particular, vis-à-vis the the province. In our district correspondence and ongoing advocacy vis-à-vis the province, this is not an aspect that we have dealt with, and neither has the province. The province has not addressed this. General topic in policy papers and proposals recently. And it's up to us to advocate and remind regarding this second element of the suite of recommendations, and I'll cite it from Mr. Buxton's report. That projects that are provincially or provincial agency-owned are not eligible to receive a P T E. This acknowledges the province's primary role in the provision of affordable housing and does not shift a financial burden to the district. So we need to be, I think, vigilant in upholding that point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. Counsel Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, I will be supporting the motion on the floor. Thanks to staff for bringing this forward and to my council colleagues for the discussion. It's a it's a bit of a tricky situation, but I think that where we're landing is the right place for the short to medium term. I think it balances the needs of our community, our affordable housing providers. All the while, being cognizant of the impact that it has on the remainder of our taxpayers. I don't think it's the long-term solution, and so I look forward to a more detailed conversation at a later date. And agree with my council colleague, Counselor Anderson, about the need for advocacy and understanding a little bit more what the options are at the provincial level. To address operating agreements and making sure that they're covering the costs, the full costs of those buildings, and also some clarity from B C assessment on what their thinking is around. Assessing a different class of of housing units that are below market value. We can have that conversation with B C assessment this week, because they'll be at U B C M. So we'll start that off. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Penningill.
Thanks. I'll be supporting this as well. You know, we we will, as we've heard, be making some P T E decisions very soon, and I appreciate having some policy. To guide us. We know we've had a lot of questions that we've answered, at least some of them here in this policy, at least for the short to medium term. And so I think that'll help us with some better and clear and fair decisions in the coming weeks. I do think some language around inclusion. Is important here, even if our current providers, there may not be as much of an issue. I think even stating those community values and expectations is important. And so I hope sooner rather than later. As we review and update this policy, we can incorporate some of that. But otherwise, I'm pleased to see this here. And I I think we we have seen strong, strong community support for finding different ways to tackle affordability, and and this is a key. Element of that, I think. So happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be, I'm speaking in support of the motion. I I appreciate staff bringing this forward and finding a creative way to further support affordable housing in our community. We are in a housing crisis and that. And that means that we need to take 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 steps we haven't taken before, and this is this is one of them. I do have some concerns around the the operating agreements and. That we'll get into discussing in future. But. The way this policy treats the provincially-owned units and the ones that are operated by our local nonprofits, I appreciate. However, if the province isn't willing to. To fund the those operating agreements to the correct amount, then we're left hole in the bag. So it is still a download, but I think it's something that we. Should take on right now, but we need to be mindful of sort of changing the the ecosystem of these things, if you will, over over time. So. But I'm supportive of this direction, and I look forward to the next stages in the discussion. So with that, I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next up is a motion to terminate. Counsel Stoner, second by Counsel French. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for joining us.